Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the October 10th Dublin City Council meeting. I will call this meeting to order. Jenny, will you please call the roll?
Ms. Saludo.
Here.
Sam Rosegrooms.
Here.
Vice Mayor DeRosa.
Here.
Mayor Fox. Mr. Keeler.
Here.
Ms. Cram.
Here.
Mr. Reiner.
Here.
And John, would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivis-
All right, well, welcome, everyone. This evening, our special presentation is once again to welcome our new city manager, Megan O'Callaghan, our first city council meeting. I know that we said hello outside, but we just want to officially say to all the people that might be watching, and we know we have a big crowd of fans, welcome, and we're looking forward to working with you as we go forward. And you're more than welcome to say anything that you want.
Thank you very much, and good evening. I appreciate your support and confidence in me to continue serving this city as your city manager. I'm extremely fortunate to have the opportunity to live in and serve this great community. I'm proud to be part of such a visionary city that advances big ideas and projects that enhance the quality of life and ensure our economic and environmental sustainability. I'm committed to upholding the culture of excellence and providing best-in-class services for our engaged residents. I'm committed to ensuring that Dublin continues to thrive and be the best city to live in, as well as the best suburb to do business. I have the most talented, or we have the most talented and dedicated team that there is, and I'm committed to fostering an environment of professional development and sense of pride that our staff has in working here. I want to thank all the staff, the members of the community, and partner organizations who've reached out and shared kind words of support since my appointment was announced, and I really appreciate the event that was held just before the council meeting. It's all been very touching. I had a great first week and look forward to working with council and the entire Dublin community and in collaboration with our regional and state partners. Thank you very much.
Thank you, council. I know we're all welcoming her, and we had an opportunity during the early reception. So, once again, Megan, welcome. During this time, it's Citizen Comments, and it's an opportunity for citizens to comment on any topic that is not on tonight's agenda. Do we have anyone signed up to speak on the agenda tonight?
We do not.
All right, thank you. Do we have, oh, do we have someone? Welcome. If you would just come to the podium and give us your name and address, please.
Hello, I did try to sign up online. I don't know if I did it on time, but my name is Shonda Wingo, and I live at 2384 Merritt Drive, Columbus, Ohio. But I'm here to talk about a Franklin County issue, which is the Senior Options Levy. In the fall, it'll be issue number 10. It is a renewal, and this is a very critical program for our seniors. So, the Senior Options Levy provides resources to our seniors 68 years of old, years of age of older, the programs and the supports necessary for them to remain in their home as long as possible safely and securely. So, that is your Meals on Wheels, your transportation, emergency response systems. And each year, the Senior Options Levy program serves more than 60,000 seniors in Franklin County. So, we would like your support, and I just wanted to make sure that I stop by. I've been on a Franklin County tour, and you all were on my list, so please support the levy if you may. Any questions?
Thank you very much.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any online comments? Thank you. The consent agenda. Is there a request to remove any item this evening from the consent agenda? Hearing none. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I'll move to approve the consent agenda.
A second, please.
Second.
Thank you. Jenny, will you please call roll?
Mr. Keeler.
Yes.
Ms. Cram.
Yes.
Ms. Saludo.
Yes.
Mr. Reiner.
Yes.
Mayor Fox.
Yes.
Vice Mayor DeRosa.
Yes.
Ms. Sam Rosegrooms.
Yes.
We have a postponed item this evening, ordinance 30-22.
Adopting the 2023 through 2027 five-year capital improvements program.
All right, our staff report this evening is our finance director, Matt Stifler. Hi, Matt.
Good evening, members of council. Tonight, we have a couple of items to discuss regarding the 2023 through 2027 CIP. Just for schedule, today, the October 10th hearing, we're asking you to postpone the CIP until October 24th, where you would hold a vote on it at its second hearing. Regarding the CIP, there are a couple of questions that we need to resolve in order to pass a balanced CIP. At the September 26th work session, you directed staff to create a new project, placeholder project of $7 million in 2025, funded with $3.5 million of new recreation-related revenues and $3.5 million in income tax-backed debt. The introduction of that income tax debt created a shortage of just under $800,000 in the final year of the CIP. So, staff looked at that final year and determined that the best way to eliminate this shortage was to reduce a placeholder associated with the Decap Connection Metro de Blazer. Previously, it was funded at $1.75 million. Reducing that to $500,000 would allow the design and engineering to occur in 2027, and then construction to occur in 2028. As a result of this change, this is really a placeholder out in the fifth year anyway, so there wasn't necessarily a plan to design and construct this in one year anyway. It's unlikely that it could be designed and constructed in one year, so the project impact is fairly minimal to make this change, and then that would rebalance the CIP. So, we're asking for your approval to move forward with that modification. The second issue is river forest, storm, and roadway improvements. In the current proposed CIP, this is programmed in 2025. Staff have prepared a couple of funding options for you to move the project to 2023 if you are so inclined to move that project forward in the CIP. There are option A and option B laid out here. Generally, option A reduces annual street maintenance by the cost of street maintenance for that roadway for $1.2 million. It removes an allocation of $450,000 for the 161 East Corridor Visioning Project. Staff have identified funds in the 2023 operating budget that could handle that project, so that project would move from the capital to the operating. And it would retain the current amount programmed in 2023 for city sign improvements, which would not include all pole-mounted entryway signs, but the prioritization of those signs at heavier intersections. Option B would remove two projects, would move them from 2023 to 2025, that being the Sawmill Interchange Planning Project and the Westbridge Streets State Route 161 Streetscape Improvements, removing that allocation for the visioning as it does in option A. This option would free up some additional funding that we could place in 2023 to complete all of the 25 pole-mounted entryway signs in that year if you wanted to pursue that project on that timeline. So, it moves a little bit more than we need, so we reallocate some of that back into that first year. So, with that, I just need some direction on whether you would like to proceed at all with moving this project forward, and if so, which of these options you would prefer to do so.
Thank you. Do we have any public comment on any of this? Okay, council, let's have conversation about the first item that Matt asked us about, removing the connection of the decap. So, let's go back to that one and have some conversation about that.
You know, I think I agree with moving ahead with the modification, because, you know, in reality, when we get into the nuts and bolts of this in a year, or two, or three, we might change it. So, it's not like it's fixed in stone. So, I don't have a problem with it.
I'm fine with it.
Yeah, I'm fine with the recommended suggestion as well.
You're asking us about weighing in between two different options, correct? There are two questions at hand. One is, do we want to move forward with pushing the river forest, stormwater resurfacing up? And then, secondly, how would we like to, what would we like to fund that through removing?
Those questions are both related to kind of the second slide. This slide is just related to the placeholder funding, because the introduction of the income tax-backed debt unbalanced the CIP. So, this is just specifically talking about rebalancing it for that placeholder.
All right, so the conversation, so we have the two questions, and the first one, you need direction on the placeholder as to whether or not you want to remove that placeholder.
We added the placeholder at the September 26th. Now, we just have to fund it, and we've identified this solution as being the least impactful.
Right.
So, I'm just looking for your consent approval, actually, your approval to move forward with this staff recommendation.
Right, and the staff recommendation is that later, that placeholder that was out in 2027 for the Decap Connector, and that is to move that out farther or to remove it to be able to balance it for this particular placeholder.
It would be to move 1.2 million out one year, or just be to reduce it from design, engineering studies, and construction to just include design and engineering in that fifth year of the CIP.
Okay, just want to have clarity there. Do we, everybody's okay with that recommendation? All right. And then, the second one would be over the river forest, and there is option A and B if you want to move forward with having the river forest improvements. Staff is recommending either looking at option A or option B, and discussion on that.
Hey, Matt, if I'm following this, you're going to go through this sort of piece by piece, because there's the other discussion about the placeholder for parks programming, or are we not going to just, I'm just trying to get the flow of how we're going through this, because I know in your memo, there were several things.
Sure. So, the placeholder for the parks programming is a separate funding concern from this project. It seems as though we've got an agreement that we could move forward with the funding for the placeholder, and that issue is resolved by changing the decap. Because that change is only in the fifth year, it doesn't help us solve the solution of moving a project that's in 2025 forward to 2023. So, at this point, based on council's feedback, I would say that the placeholder is resolved and is funded based on the decisions that we've made thus far.
Just to be clear, we had talked about not putting it in the last year of the CIP, but putting it in an earlier year. So, what year are we talking about for the parks?
The park placeholder is in 2025.
Okay.
There was sufficient excess revenues in '25 and '26.
Okay.
To absorb those debt payments, but they culminated in a reduction of almost $800,000 in 2027. So, that's where the deficit is, but the project is in 2025.
Okay, very good. Thank you. So, this would be the only, what you're asking now is sort of the only remaining piece of the puzzle. Is that right?
That is correct, and it is a self-contained. None of the decisions on this slide affect any of the other parts of the capital budget unless you choose to bring them into this conversation. But at this point, the parks placeholder is funded in 2025 in the proposed CIP.
All right, any choices here on option, Matt needs direction on option A or option B?
I personally lean towards preserving option B, and drove up and down Mearfield Drive today, no less than six times. And if the engineers are saying that it's in good enough shape for additional year, it's fine with me, you know. So, I like the items in option B. I think we voted for them. And I think they're visual improvements that are going to enhance the overall aesthetic of our city. So, I'm voting for B, but...
Other comments?
Okay.
He wants to go with option A, I think is what you're saying. It was all that mood music we had earlier. Okay, any other thoughts on what your preference might be, Christina?
Yeah, certainly. I think option A is my preferred option as well. I agree with the visual improvements. I think those need to stay. I'd like to preserve those, and I'd prefer to go with option A.
My only hesitation in option, in moving forward and executing all of option B, is the Sawmill Interchange renovation. And the only reason that I think that is if we were to be successful in building the bridge right in that location, that might change what we want the landscape to look like in that area. So, in a year's time, we might have a better picture of what that would look like. I know, what are we, in a 60% design on that bridge, or where do we stand?
At this point, I believe the study has been concluded. Have we started detailed design yet, Jeannie? Jeannie shaking her head no.
Thank you. Good evening, members of council. We have concluded the study for the crossing over 270. We have issued the, we're waiting for the proposals to come back for the next step for preliminary engineering for the design of the bridge, but it's not going to be detailed design. It's the preliminary engineering. So, we'll be formally setting the type, size, and location, and then the connection points.
Okay.
And finishing all of that work.
That would be my only hesitation, is that, you know, the designs that we have seen thus far don't contemplate a bridge in very close proximity to that, particularly on the west side of Sawmill Road. So, I would, that would be a factor for me of whether or not, and I would probably keep the balance of option B intact, and maybe there would be a hybrid option of something else that could happen. But, you know, I just would hate for us to build something, to put something off and rearrange the CIP, to put something in that we would ultimately end up removing or disturbing, or we might want something entirely different once that additional bridge is sighted and we know what the elevations are going to be, and so on and so forth.
So, Matt, with this one, though, this is the 450,000 you're talking about, right?
The 600, the Sawmill Interchange renovation. That is the 270.
We could move that to 2026. It doesn't have to stay in 2025. If that's what your concern is, or you could break it up even if you wanted to. You could do a portion of it in 2025 and a portion in 2026. Because I hear what you're saying. You're right.
There could be some savings if you have a contract that executes both these things at the same time.
Right.
You know, if you're already doing construction in the vicinity of the interchange, and you, you know, you're grading and all of those things with the lane closures and all, you know, those things get to be very expensive. There may be some economies to aligning those projects together so that we might ultimately be able to save some money. And it's just something I bring forward just as a consideration. It's not a hill to die on, but I just think it's important that we, eyes wide open, that we at least have the discussion.
Yeah, that's fair.
Just following that train of thought, then, A is the better option, right? So, A is go ahead and, no, you're saying go ahead, do the maintenance and wait on the Sawmill Interchange.
It's sort of a combination of the two of them.
Yeah.
And which I personally, I think is a really good call out, because once you put some construction in there, I think what you might want to see in terms of the planting project might be very different than what it is, how it's laid out, or is going to be laid out as of today.
Yeah, and, you know, I know we've talked about the signs before. I wouldn't mind moving those out, so if there's some more dollars you could put in the bucket to do that, I 'd move those. I wouldn't work so hard to retain some of the signs, which both of these options are. So, if that were to free up some money, and fully understand the note in your write-up to us that it includes all the signs, the pillar, the big, the monument signs as well, I totally get that. But I would always opt for, you know, important maintenance in some of those things. So, if there would be a way to do some sort of a combination, that seems like a logical answer. I just don't know how that affects the road redo.
I've said before, I'm in favor of doing our street maintenance and doing the river forest and our street maintenance over aesthetic changes. So, I'm for delaying the Sawmill Road Interchange and also the signs. So, I kind of, I know that's completely opposite of what another council member just said, but that, my vote is use that money for maintenance.
So, I think it goes without saying, everybody's in agreement, the maintenance needs to happen. It's how we pay for it. What do we sacrifice? I'm not necessarily of the belief that aesthetic changes should be put off, because I think that every day that the gateways to the city are an eyesore, it's a potential missed opportunity for folks that are looking around central Ohio. We're growing in central Ohio now quickly, and we want to seize every opportunity we can. Matt, you knew this wasn't just going to be an easy decision. We weren't just going to pick A or B. We kind of want à la carte choices. This may not be popular. I mentioned it last time, but to me, Riverside Crossing Park does not need to happen in 2023. Let it percolate. Let that area percolate. It's, you know, it's a gem of the city. Nobody's complaining about it. It's not an eyesore. So, why throw $1 million at it in 2023 and $5 million or more the following year? Reallocate those assets to the things that we've already identified we want to get done. You know, commercial development, commercial developers will tell you, you always want to add the next shiny thing. Developments that are static, they get stale, and they're less popular. The developers are making the shiny penny themselves. We don't need, what I'm talking about is the development that continues to occur in Bridge Street, Bridge Park. It's happening. The Rabel property, there's a proposal to develop that. They're keeping it shiny and new. Let's take some of those dollars and cross some of these things off of our list.
You know, I agree with you, except for I would like to see how the parks finished it. I like to see the plans for Bridge Park, to see what the draw would be for that, you know, including, I know, and, you know, we got another huge draw, because sitting in the wings is another part of that project that goes all the way down to 270. So, as he was discussing, you know, hey, you know, what's shiny and new? Well, we're going to have another project hopefully here shortly that's going to go all the way down to 270, which will conclude Bridge Park, basically. It'll take it right to the freeway. But, with that being said, I'd still like to see what the details are in the plan that's going to make that park just zoom. But I don't disagree with you. There's a possibility of pulling some of the money out of it, but...
So, Matt, does our development agreement allow us to push that back?
Well, I think there's a couple of points on that. First, the design for the Riverside Crossing Park in 2023 is funded with TIF funds, so none of that will unfortunately help us solve this issue in '23. Moving '24 out would delay the income tax-supported debt service on that debt in '24, but that's not necessarily going to help us solve the problem today. So, I think either way, to council member Reiner's point, we could design the park next year and then make a decision as to whether, with the design in hand, we wanted to continue on that timeline or push it back at that time.
But that doesn't necessarily impact the conversation we're having here.
But it doesn't help us tonight. That's correct.
I understand. I would like to put that, though, as a note for when we have the CIP discussion next year, because I think that's a good point.
Appreciate that. Will do.
Great.
You know, what's interesting about this, you want to sort of see what we're getting, and so, you know, the planning part isn't the expensive part. And then, the next thing is, that park may fill up with all kinds of interesting activities, like we had the Japanese festival, and it might sort of carry itself. I mean, all we might need is the grass.
I hear you, John, and I agree. I think that's essentially why I just asked Matt to make sure that he puts it as a point of discussion at the beginning of the CIP for next year, because to your point, we're going to know much more what that's going to look like at that time.
So, Matt, just to try to provide some headway, so, I do, I agree with Andy. I think everyone is, and correct me if I'm wrong, I think there's generally support to move the river forest, stormwater resurfacing, to keep it in its original location. And so, that being said, we need to find 1.2, 1.4 million so that we can have a balanced budget, right? So, if we're looking at these items, and we need to do the math, I will just say for me, of the items that are available to us that will help move the needle on the conversation that we're having, I would be in favor of putting the Sawmill Interchange renovation in a further out year, continue to keep it in the CIP in a further out year until we had more data available to what the Emerald Parkway, or whatever the name of that road's going to be, whatever that crossing is over 270, so that perhaps we could execute on it at that point in time and perhaps have some economies to scale. I would also be in favor of pushing out the park signs, you know, maybe not the entire amount for those signs. Maybe if we're going to do the 161 East Corridor, you know, redoing the entrance into the city, maybe we keep the you know, redoing the entrance into the city, maybe we keep the columns that would be constructed there, because we're already going to be doing construction in that place at that time. And that would allow us to finish that gateway coming into the city on 161. So I don't know what portion of that number that represents, but I would take 650 and add whatever that is to it. Then my next, let's see.
So it was also brought up about the park on South High Street was another option in one of the other memos.
Oh, there was 83,000.
It was like 80,000 dollars or something. So we could get, I'm totally fine with grabbing that 80,000 and postponing that as well.
So those are just my thoughts of how I, I would go at it. Whatever projects that we're, you know, in the vicinity that we're working on, I would keep the portion of that project that's in that vicinity intact, and the balance of it, move it out a year. And then my interchange would, would bump back a bit just until we had, you know, better engineering numbers and we knew what the grading was going to be along 270. How far, you know, for example, how far to the east is that grading going to be from that bridge so that we don't spend several hundred thousand dollars on trees and stone and so on and so forth, that ultimately we would have to remove to make those grades work? So that, that's just where I'm thinking.
I, I think each of those sounds very acceptable to me. I'm very fine with all of that. I would only ask that when we do go to, when you do the updates to this, kind of give us a little preface about sort of all of the things that changed since the last time we had a conversation. I just, I got a little confused on the first slide. We sort of dove right into it. I just needed a little appetizer to refresh my memory. That's all.
Can do.
So, well, I just want to, I want to clarify, because in, in listening to each person, I want to also clarify about option A. In order to do the River Forest, you, you require 1.6 million dollars, right? So if, I, I heard two for B early on, I heard two for A, or one for A, and I also heard a couple of hybrid options. And Andy was talking about Riverside Crossing Park. If you main, if you did hybrid, and I would ask Megan to weigh in on this, if you left, if you took the 1.2 million and you allowed the Muirfield Drive to be placed, moved to 2024 or 2025, and you took Chris's suggestion of pushing back the 650 on the Sawmill Interchange renovation and allowing these other things to exist, would that, would that solve the problem?
Mathematically, you wouldn't need to. The 450 for the East Corridor Visioning Project is not needed, so that you can take out.
You can take out, because it's founded, that money is in the operating budget.
That money is 450 without any additional decision. So you wouldn't need to move any of the interchange. You would just need to move the 1.2.
Right. So that's all we need, is, in other words, everything else would stay. And the question that Chris has about making sure that we don't design and build something that might get torn up later, could be then simply pushed back, money not spent, we wouldn't have to move forward with this. It would be a short six. No, option A would handle. If you chose option A, then River Forest is pretty much paid for, is what you're saying.
Under option A or B, if you, it sounded like in the hybrid option, if you wanted to move the Sawmill Interchange back, we could investigate. I don't know what a reduction of, a reduction of 1.2 million means that we're not paving that section of Avery Muirfield that Bob identified, but I don't know what in a, a reduction of 650,000, does that buy you any additional paving or not? It sounds like it should, but you have to buy it in lumps. And I don't know, we've had that conversation. So I would have to, to talk with him and find out if that actually does get you somewhere in the paving program and what that looks like.
But the 1.2 that we save from doing the Muirfield Drive area from Terra Hill to Brand gets us what we need for the river, or for the river, thank you, river, there's a lot of rivers going on, River Forest paving, right?
It does. Under option A, it does.
So we're really asking for something additional on top of that, which is to, to postpone a little bit that, that Sawmill Interchange renovation.
And that's something we can do. We can move something back in a CIP without any financial issues.
I think that's what I was trying to clarify, is that if we choose option A, it's, it's clean.
Option A plus, really, is what we're asking for.
I guess that's what it is, the hybrid. So if there's a desire to have a concern about whether or not this Sawmill Interchange renovation project could run into problems because of the bridge, we have options with that. Is that, can you weigh in on that, Matt?
Yes, and shifting the Sawmill Interchange project out a year, you know, we could have that conversation again next year, depending what happens with the development at that interchange as well as the bridge funding. So that doesn't cause staff any issues if we were to make that change this year.
What happens about the, then the West Bridge Street, then? What would happen to this in this scenario?
It would continue in 2023.
So that is what John would like to see happen. So that solves that issue. And you perhaps would be able to do the signs if that 650 was pushed out.
If we move that 650 back, we would absolutely be able to bring forward more signs than is currently programmed.
Yeah, great solution.
On, on whether or not option A is the choice here.
I think we just reconstructed it into a hybrid option. Matt, do you have the direction that you need? Are you clear?
Yes, so.
So let's say, option A would give you the River Forest improvements, and then we're requesting the possibility of looking at pushing back the Sawmill Interchange renovation project to be able to afford more signage. And that is the direction we're looking for? Is that what we're saying? Do you say it back to us and we'll tell you if we agree with it?
Yes, that's, I understand. So we're starting with option A. We're going to reduce the annual street maintenance program by 1.2 million in 2023. We're going to remove the 450,000 for the East Corridor Visioning Project. We're going to push back.
Wait, are you, you're not removing it, you're relocating it?
We are relocating it, reallocating it. It doesn't exist in the CIP. It's in the operating budget, so we'll be fine there. The Sawmill Interchange renovation and planning project will move from 2023 to 2024, and then the sign-up dates that were brought forward as part of option B will be brought forward from 2025, I think, to 2023. And we will be able to do the pole-mounted signs in 2023.
So you have your direction. Good. All right. I, I'm, are there any other questions or discussions before we close this? All right. I'm moving to postpone the vote on ordinance 30-22 until the October 24, 2022 meeting. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Jenny. Will you please call roll?
Ms. Amrose Grooms?
Yes.
Mr. Keeler?
Yes.
Vice Mayor DeRosa?
Yes.
Mayor Fox?
Yes.
Ms. Cram?
Yes.
Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Ms. Saludo?
Yes.
All right. Second reading, public hearing ordinance 38-22.
Authorizing the provision of certain incentives to Vernovus LTD to induce it to lease a facility to relocate and expand its office and its associated operations and workforce, all within the city, and authorizing the execution of an economic development agreement.
Thank you. Our staff report this evening is our Economic Development Administrator, Jenna Garing. Welcome, Jenna.
Good evening, members of council. As you may recall, we've been in discussions with Vernovus on the relocation of their company to the city of Dublin. Vernovus LTD is a locally owned and operated staffing and solutions firm that helps companies at all stages of growth, complete critical business initiatives in the areas of technology, cybersecurity, accounting, and finance. The economic development agreement proposed is for Vernovus, or to Vernovus, is a 15% percent performance incentive on the withholdings over three years valued at $26,000 for the term of the agreement and consideration of the company's investment in planned workforce growth in Dublin. The city is also proposing a $10,000 location grant to offset moving and fit-up costs. Here with us this evening representing Vernovus is Jason Skidmore, president and CEO, and Jason will be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Welcome. If you would just state your name and address, we'd appreciate that.
Yeah, sure. Jason Skidmore. And, personal address, sorry, 5879 Farmstead Lane, Delaware, Ohio, 43015. Thank you, members of council. Thank you, Jenna. Appreciate the opportunity to be here. So, yeah, as Jenna mentioned, we're a talent solutions firm. I've had a presence here in central Ohio for the last seven years. We're looking to continue to expand that presence. Dublin just seems like a great place for us to be. We have a very strong client base here. We have a strong employee base here. As we continue our growth, we anticipate that we'll at least double our local headcount over the next three years. We think Dublin provides a great opportunity for us to really dig in and provide that type of presence here in the central Ohio region that we're looking for. It's a great base for us to recruit talent. We specialize in the IT, accounting, and cybersecurity spaces. So Dublin also being a very strong technology hub is another reason for that appeal. So thank you for your consideration, and we'd be pleased to get your support on this.
Thank you very much. We really appreciate it. It's good to learn what the new businesses are and what you do here. So we're, we're really glad that you've chosen Dublin.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody have any questions? All right. Thank you very much. Do we have any public comment? All right. Thank you. Are there any further questions or discussions concerning this? All right. Thank you, Jenna. Jenny, will you please call roll?
Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Ms. Saludo?
Yes.
Ms. Cram?
Yes.
Ms. Amrose Grooms?
Yes.
Mayor Fox?
Yes.
Vice Mayor DeRosa?
Yes.
Mr. Keeler?
Yes.
Yes, welcome to Dublin. Thank you very much. Introduction, first reading, public hearing ordinances. I move to waive the council rules of order to read ordinances 39-22 through 48-22 together. Is there a second?
Second.
Jenny, will you please call the roll?
Ms. Cram?
Yes.
Ms. Amrose Grooms?
Yes.
Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Vice Mayor DeRosa?
Yes.
Mr. Keeler?
Yes.
Mayor Fox?
Yes.
Ms. Saludo?
Yes.
Ordinance 3922, authorizing the city manager to execute and accept necessary conveyance documents and contracts to acquire certain property located on Franklin Street, identified as Franklin County Parcel Number 27300012300 from Jeffrey Bulliard and Brooke Bulliard for the public purpose of carrying out the South High Street Utility Burial Project, 19030CIP. Ordinance 4022 is regarding property located on South High Street, owned by 63 South High LLC. Ordinance 4122 is property located on South High Street, owned by Hospital Holdings LLC. Ordinance 4222, property located on South High Street, 91 South High Street LLC. Ordinance 4322, the property is located on Franklin Street and owned by Andrew Wages and Janet Wages, trustees of Wages Family Revocable Trust, dated May 8, 2008. Ordinance 4422, the property located on Franklin Street is owned by John Regal, successor trustee of the Ruth Moffett Revocable Living Trust, dated the 16th day of September, 1996. Ordinance 4522 is the property located on Franklin Street, Eric B. Pickering and Lucy Pickering. Ordinance 4622, the property is located on South High Street and owned by Richard J. Tobarin. Ordinance 4722 is property located on South High Street, owned by Robert Carrer Jr., trustee of the Robert C. Carrer Jr. Living Trust, dated April 12, 2002. And ordinance 4822 is the property located on Waterford Drive, owned by Ryan Dammun and Calista Dammun.
I'll introduce them.
Thank you. Our staff report is from Director of Engineering, Paul Hammersmith. Hi, Paul.
Primary electric lines underground and relocate the existing overhead electric and telecommunications lines along Franklin Street, Mill Lane, and intersecting streets to underground. At the completion of the project, all overhead utility lines and poles in the project area will, will be removed between West Bridge Street and Short Street. So that is our primary goal at the end of this. The poles along South High Street will be removed at the conclusion of the second phase of this project, which follows the current project. We'll discuss this evening and these acquisitions, which are Phase 1. Additionally, this project must be performed prior to the construction of the Franklin Street Improvement Project. The city is currently finalizing construction agreements with AEP and telecommunications providers for the project, which are anticipated to be presented to council before the end of the year, hopefully soon. Acquisition of property interest from 23 property owners is necessary to construct this project, which is Phase 1. Presently, this project is planned to start construction in early 2023 and is anticipated to be complete in the late summer or early autumn of 2023. These 10 ordinances provide for 10 acquisitions of property as detailed in the staff report. The city has participated in good faith discussions with the property owners and has arrived at mutually agreeable terms. Additional acquisitions will be presented to city council at the October 24 council meeting. The adoption of these ordinances authorize the city manager to execute all necessary conveyance documents and contracts to formally acquire the necessary property interest. Staff recommends adoption of these 10 ordinances at the second reading and public hearing on October 24, 2022. With that, I'd be glad to answer any questions you might have.
Do we have any public comment?
No, ma'am.
Do we have any questions for Paul this evening? Kathy?
I just had one question, Paul. Thank you. So during the utilities burial, I see that there'll be fiber, Dublin's fiber also, Dublin, in this area, or did I misread that?
Yep.
Yes.
Say, we're providing for the conduit, the Dublin conduit in the area.
Okay. So that's wonderful. So when this is done, that will, will advance the connectivity all the way down there. I think that's wonderful. So I appreciate that.
Yeah. So wherever we're placing conduit, that has been our, our goal is to provide for that conduit. But again, and there's been a lot of, I think, misperception that we're going to be doing excavation on South High Street, which we are not. The only thing that'll occur there is the removal of the poles and all the overhead lines. So the primary excavation and the conduit placement will be on South Franklin Street, Mill Lane, other areas.
Thank you very much. That's great.
You're welcome.
Paul, this brings forward 10 of the parcels. In a total of, you said, how many?
23.
23. And have negotiations been going?
Yeah, they're ongoing presently. These were just the first one group that we had settled, so we thought we'd bring them as, we had a, a good group to present to council.
Right. And you think that will stay on pace to ensure that we're able to execute on this next year?
Mr. Gable is giving me the, the nod, yes. So that is our plan. Yeah. I mean, we, we've been having very good discussions with folks.
I would imagine it's beneficial to everyone in the district, so that's.
Absolutely.
Thanks so much.
You're welcome.
Paul, I have a question for you. Because some of the groundwork is happening around the old car barn, and it's my understanding, and I've just heard this through the neighborhood, that there will be underground boring and that you won't have to remove any of the stone walls or anything like that to try to get the wires to the poles that you need to along there. Is that, is that correct?
Yeah, I think our plan is the, I mean, not disturb any of the stone walls, the historic stone walls in the district, and to avoid those. So I think there'll be a combination of directional drilling, some open excavation, because with the directional drilling, it is required to basically tie the conduits together to have those points, and certainly any conflict points. But as much as possible, we're trying to minimize disruption in the district. But I, I will tell you that through this project, there will be disruption. And we're going to work closely with the Historic Dublin Business Association to, to communicate the activities that take place.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Are there any further questions or discussion for Paul? Okay. Our second reading and public hearing is scheduled for October 24, 2022. And so I move next to waive the council rules of order to read ordinances 49-22 through 51-22 together. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Jenny, please call the roll.
Ms. Saludo?
Yes.
Mayor Fox?
Yes.
Ms. Cram?
Yes.
Ms. Amrose Grooms?
Yes.
Vice Mayor DeRosa?
Yes.
Mr. Keeler?
Yes.
Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Ordinance 4922, authorizing the city manager to execute and accept necessary conveyance documents and contracts to acquire certain property located at 8431 Trails End Drive, identified as Franklin County Parcel Number 27300903200 from Robert B. Daniels and Cheryl E. Daniels for the public purpose of constructing a hammerhead at the terminus of Trails End Drive as part of the sanitary sewer extension project, 21013CIP. Ordinance 5022, regarding the property at 8432 Trails End Drive, owned by David A. Blissinbach, trustee of the David A. Blissinbach Family Trust, dated June 19, 1996. And ordinance 5122, regarding the property at 8171 Trails End Drive, owned by Daniel Schoenberger and Terry L. Schoenberger, aka Terry L. Harmon.
I'll introduce them.
Thank you. Our staff report, again, it's Paul.
Thank you, Mayor. This sanitary sewer project will extend sanitary sewer service to the Trails End Drive neighborhood and reconstruct the road- to the Trails and Drive neighborhood and reconstruct the roadway of Trails and Drive as identified by the Division of Asset Management. Additionally, a portion of the stormwater maintenance program will be performed in conjunction with this project. Acquisition of property interest from three property owners is necessary to construct the project. Presently, this project is planned to start construction in early 2023 and is anticipated to be complete by the end of September 2023. These ordinances provide for three acquisitions of property as detailed in the staff report in your packet. I'm glad to review those details if so desired by council. The city has participated in good faith discussions with the property owners and has arrived at mutually agreeable terms. The adoption of these ordinances authorize the city manager to execute all necessary conveyance documents and contracts to formally acquire the necessary property interest. Staff recommends the adoption of these three ordinances at the second reading and public hearing on October 24, 2022. Once again, I'll be glad to answer any questions council members might have regarding these ordinances.
Thank you, Paul. Public comment available? No? Do we have some questions for Paul with all these parcels? No? Any? All right. Our second reading and public hearing is scheduled for October 24, 2022. Thank you, Paul.
Thank you.
Well, you're not done yet, are you? Oh, maybe you are. I moved to waive the council rules of order to read ordinances 52-22 and 53-22 together. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Jenny, please call the roll.
Vice Mayor DeRosa?
Yes.
Ms. Cram?
Yes.
Mr. Keeler?
Yes.
Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Mayor Fox?
Yes.
Ms. Amrose Grooms?
Yes.
Ms. Saludo?
Yes.
Ordinance 5222 authorizing the city manager to execute an easement with property owners Scott and Megan Weaver along the Indian Run Meadows Planned Use Development Corridor for landscape maintenance. Ordinance 5322 is regarding property owners Charles and Jenny Shaw.
I'll introduce them.
Thank you. Our staff report on these parcels is Parks and Recreation Director Matt Erman. Thank you, Matt.
Good evening, members of council. These two ordinances are continued efforts to secure landscape maintenance easements along Indian Run Meadows Planned Use Development Corridor, also known as the Greenway Corridor Program that was initiated by city council in 2020. Of the 31 total property owners along this corridor, 21 of them have affirmed participation in the program, and that would be to transfer the maintenance responsibilities to the city in order for those properties to meet the screening code requirements. Staff will continue to communicate with those that have not responded or are not willing to participate in the program. And once this first phase of improvements is complete, notification will be sent to those not participating of their responsibilities going forward. Thankfully, we are now prepared to initiate the project and the enhancements. Staff has prepared planting plans for each of the properties and has met with each of the owners for their awareness and input for those plans, and is now seeking bids for the work to be completed. If successful, staff will bring that resolution to council at its November 7 meeting for approval and the project commencing as early as November 8. The project includes the removal of 84 trees and shrubs that are in poor or dead condition. It also includes planting of 123 new trees and shrubs to achieve the code screening requirements. Collectively, cost estimates for this work is between $100,000 to $120,000. And there are currently $25,000 has been appropriated from the reforestation fund for this project. And there are sufficient funds available in the, in the budget to cover the gap between that and the actual costs once they're realized. Staff will include those additional funds needed for the reforestation fund in the Q4 supplemental. So this being the first reading for these, these ordinances, staff will bring them back to you for the second reading on October 24. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Public comment, Lindsay? All right. Counsel, conversation?
Matt, is it your intention to send out a kind of a drop dead date notice to those that have chosen not to participate in telling them, you know, describing to the neighborhood when the program will commence, what the scope of the program is, and, you know, what will be a result at the completion of it, just so that they really understand that there, that this is the opportunity to participate, and once that opportunity has passed, it's passed?
Yes, we will be sending those out. I wanted to get the project actually in progress. And so now that it will be in progress, we will be notifying them of what their specific screening requirements are. We also did those planting plans for those properties. So we will share that with those property owners so that they understand full well what, what is required going forward.
And what's the duration of this work?
We should get most of it done this fall. Some of the species that we're using probably won't be available or need to be planted until spring. So it'll be the spring of 2023.
Because I think if you, you know, if you sent that note out a week or two into the project, you'd probably have your best response. And it may not be too late to tag on those additional parcels at that point in time. Because, you know, once somebody sees activity in the area, then they, you know, it becomes more real.
Yeah. Understood.
Appreciate you doing that.
Thank you.
Just so you know, I'm just curious, you know, the opacity for this, you're, you know, hopefully it's going to last 30, 40 years. And I guess that's what I'm interested in, the screening value of this. Is it deciduous? Is it evergreen? Is it?
The code calls for a mix of deciduous, evergreen, and shrubs. So what we will do is we will go ahead and plant these as planned. If there's additional plantings that we feel is necessary to achieve the intent of the code, we can always go back and plant more.
Yeah, I'm, I'm sort of interested in seeing this summer and winter. You know, I don't want to see it defoliated and then you drive down the road and boom, you can see all the visual pollution that we've seen in the past.
Yeah, the intent is to make sure that we are achieving what the expectations were, not just specifically what the code calls for.
Okay, thank you.
I think, Matt, as part of this, if I was reading, there will be some tree removal as well during part of this. How extensive do you anticipate that's going to be?
How, how?
How, how much? How extensive? Tree removal?
There will be, well, we counted 84 that are in poor or dead condition. So, in, in a lot of ways, I think by removing them, it'll be addition by subtraction in the aesthetics category. But they will be replaced with new trees.
Yeah, I just know tree removal creates emotion regardless. So, and I know that the neighborhood and the HOAs, particularly in that community, have had a lot of discussion about this. So, in addition to letting folks know about sort of the duration and getting on board, I think whatever communication can be done to, to not only the, the houses that this is happening, but in the general vicinity thereof and the HOAs there, ahead of the work being done, ahead of the trees being removed, so that people can put all that in context. And I know you're going to do that. I'm just saying that that's, I think, going to be incredibly important, because there's been a lot of conversation about this for the homeowners up in, you know...
I agree. I think there's going to be a lot of curiosity. And, you know, we will work with the HOA and, or, or the neighborhoods. And, and we will also work with our public information office as well. So...
Thank you, Matt Erman.
Thank you.
Good opportunity to bring this up during the HOA fall meeting, too, so that they can kind of spread the word among themselves. So, thank you, Matt. Our second reading and public hearing is scheduled for, as you said, October 24, 2022. Ordinance 54-22.
Authorizing the city manager to execute an easement agreement for driveway purposes with Nung Go for access to the property located at 8218 Riverside Drive.
I'll introduce it.
Paul's back. Paul's back with a staff report.
Good evening, members of council. In the fall of 2021, Nung No purchased six lots in the block, in Block 5 of the O'Shaughnessy Hills subdivision, as indicated on the location map on your screen. The six parcels are located at the southeast corner of Riverside Drive and what's known as Maumee Avenue, which is a platted street yet unimproved in O'Shaughnessy, in the O'Shaughnessy Hills subdivision. The owner purchased the lots with the intent to construct a single-family residential home on two, on the two lots immediately adjacent to Riverside Drive, as depicted on the attached plot plan, which I'm going to have on the screen here in a moment. Originally, the drive to the proposed new home was to be from Arrowhead Drive and located within an easement on property owned by an adjacent property owner who actually owned these six lots prior to Miss No purchasing them. Unfortunately, Miss No was not able to secure the needed easement for the driveway and was forced to find another location for her driveway to her home. In August of this year, the owner met with city staff to talk about alternative driveway locations to her property. While direct access to Riverside Drive cannot be denied for the parcels that she now owns, it was really in our best interest to work with the property owner to come up with alternatives for her driveway. And staff determined that really in the best interest of the city and the community and the safety of motorists, it was beneficial to improve Maumee Avenue with an easement agreement whereby the property owner would construct a 15-foot driveway within that right of way, be responsible for the maintenance of that driveway while they used it, yet not prevent the extension of that driveway into the future if other property owners needed it further to the east. And there are lots within the O'Shaughnessy Hills subdivision that could develop in the future. With that, we worked with the owner, Miss No, her legal representative, on the easement agreement that's before you this evening, which is for driveway purposes, as attached and was in your staff report. Again, the responsibility to construct and maintain the driveway falls upon Miss No and all future owners. The easement, again, does not preclude the city from placing, replacing the driveway with a public road in the future. As always, you know, this ordinance authorizes city manager to execute on behalf of the city the easement agreement. Staff does recommend adoption of this ordinance at the second reading, or second, or the public hearing and second reading on October 24, 2022. With that, I'd be glad to answer any questions you might have.
Curious, there wasn't a solution from Arrow, Arrowhead Drive?
When the exhibit goes back up there, it is. You'll actually see initially that it began to construct a driveway, and that's that, if I can point to it, this gravel pad that's on Arrowhead Drive. But again, that required an easement on Lot 1, which is still owned by Ms. Bluman still.
And she wouldn't give the easement?
It was part of the contract that that easement needed to be negotiated within a certain period of time and was not executed.
And there's no interest in re?
Attempts have been made to do that.
In that activity? No?
No.
She, she doesn't want it?
Correct.
Because I've seen that entryway there.
Yes. And one of the, the concerns that staff had with this location, and that initially was the agreed upon location between the two owners, is its proximity to the intersection of Riverside Drive and Arrowhead Drive. It's very close. I mean, it's just almost adjacent to the stop bar for Arrowhead Drive.
Okay.
So although there are really no good solutions necessarily, we really felt we arrived at the best solution of, you know, for a driveway to lots that are going to be, be developed.
All these lots, four, five, six, seven, do they have sewer?
No. Actually, the plan for the two-story residence that's to be constructed is septic and leach, and they show their on-lot system. Actually, I'll probably say it's, might also be a mound system. But it's actually shown between the home and also Riverside Drive. So it'll be an on-lot system.
So you're telling us that all the other lots are going to go to a larger septic system? Is that, is that what you've said?
No.
Or how are they going to fit a septic, septic system on these smaller lots? I guess that's what I'm just asking.
I doubt that, yeah. It would really require they have to meet the Franklin County Public Health standards, you know, for the system. So I think that's why you see Lot 2 and 3 being necessary for the home construction and the on-lot system. So my anticipation would be if there was homes constructed on lots 4 through 7, that it would require all of those lots for a house and an on-lot system, if she would choose to sell them for that purpose.
Is there enough real estate there for a septic system?
On?
For all the, for all those smaller lots?
Not on one individual lot, no. You would have to have a combination of lots to meet the, the county standards. And typically, that's been, used to be pretty much one acre. Now it's almost one and a half acres of available area.
And that's what I'm getting at. So why would we have a parcel showing all these lots when you couldn't put a septic system there and we don't have a sewer proposed for the site?
Yeah. I think at the, after the purchase, and it's not reflected on this plot plan, she actually combined the lots into one parcel itself. So I think the auditor's records no longer show lots 2 through 7. She actually did a lot combinations. So if she would choose, like with lots again, 4 through 7, she would have to come in for a lot split for those lots if she would choose to sell them. She has not indicated any desire to sell those lots in our discussions.
I, I'm just curious why we have a site plan in front of us where that's not shown? Because it's, it's an impracticality, right? To develop on those lots?
Well, that's true of all throughout O'Shaughnessy Hills. They're all shown as individual lots that by themselves, no one lot, I believe, could be developed under today's standards.
So there's a difference between a lot and a parcel?
Correct.
Those, those are not synonymous in this drawing. So...
That's true.
In, in my mind, there's, there's two questions I have. We don't have a topography on this. But in this section of Riverside Drive, there is, tends to be a flat before you get into a hill. So where this Maumee Avenue, where this road is going to terminate, is, what kind of slope is the termination of that road?
There is some grade to it. They haven't provided those grades to us. It's probably between 5 and 10% is my guess, somewhat similar to Arrowhead Drive itself.
Because I would imagine, you know, if it were, we don't have measurements on these lots, but I'm, I'm guessing, you know, if an acre is 43,560 square feet, that, I don't know how many of these lots would, because it's zoned R1, correct?
I believe so. I don't have that committed to memory.
I don't know if you could, I don't know how to calculate the square footage to come up with an acre. But it would be interesting to see how many of these possibly could be, so that we don't get in the Summit View situation where it's really precarious often in the wintertime, as you're coming down that hill and it ices over. And I suspect we would service Summit View a lot more frequently than we would Maumee coming. I just want to make sure that there's a significant amount of flat, because this can't be high priority on our salting list.
Right.
Because it's one house, and we have a lot more than one houses in the city. So it's going to have to be flat at the bottom.
Well, and bear in mind, initially, this will be a driveway for the property owner to clear and maintain and, and take care of that snow removal, not the city.
But I would suspect as soon as water and sewer got up this far in future programming, that those lots would become very attractive. And they wouldn't need to be the 43,560 square feet anymore. They could, they could have rezoning for something else that didn't need to drill a well and have septic.
Potentially.
So, I just want to make sure that the engineering on the bottom of this street is such that we're not creating a significant grade down and dumping a car on ice onto Riverside Drive.
Right. I mean, our maximum slope on a residential driveway, when we're reviewing plot plans, is 8%. Typically, we will allow up to 10% unless there are extenuating circumstances. So...
I, I would require this 5 would be the limit. Just the extenuating circumstances at the end of that slope is a state problem.
I just, I just have one question, and it's not really what we're voting on, but out of curiosity. So they're putting their, their mounding, their septic system awfully close to Riverside Drive here. I mean, do we have any opportunity at this point to make sure it's far enough east for when we get our easement to put it, because we're going to be putting a sewer line there hopefully soon and a shared path?
Right.
I know that's probably their backup one. The closer one is probably the first one. But it looks like there might, it's, there's, what, five, does it say 5.7 feet?
Well, that's actually the width.
Oh, the width of that?
Correct.
So yeah, it looks like, but that doesn't look like much space left.
And I think that's actually supposed to be 15.77. I think the 1 is blocked.
It's overlapped with the Dublin. Okay.
Yes.
I just want to make sure that if we can have any say at this point, do we make sure their septic tank, their septic mounding is outside of any easement we would need?
We'll have that discussion with them. They have not yet submitted for a building permit, so the plot plan has not yet been approved.
Any other questions? Conversation? All right. Our second reading on public hearing is scheduled for October 24, 2022. Thank you, Paul. Introduction, public hearing and vote of resolution, Resolution 48-22.
Accepting the lowest and best bid for the sanitary sewer extension Area 1B project.
I'll introduce it.
You can't leave, Paul.
Give me one moment, please. Wrong folder. All right. Now we're ready. Members of council, staff conducted a competitive bid process for the sanitary sewer extension Area 1B project, which, as we discussed previously, will extend sanitary sewer to the Trails and Drive neighborhood, reconstruct the street, and... and Drive neighborhood, reconstruct the street, and also provide for a stormwater improvement. On September 27th, 2022, four bids were received and publicly open. This project is funded in the 2022-2026 Capital Improvements Program in the amount of $960,000 and $900,000 from the sanitary sewer extension 1B, sanitary sewer and roadway accounts respectively. So $960,000 from the utility fund, $900,000 basically from the general fund for the roadway work. Double Z Construction submitted the lowest and best bid of $1,999,631.08, which exceeds the budgeted funds. Staff anticipates being able to cover the additional costs using funds previously appropriated as part of the current five-year CIP and available from one or more projects appropriated in 2022, but that will not proceed this year and will be included in the 23 to 27 CIP. Staff recommends council approval of this resolution, accepting it as lowest and best a bid of Double Z Construction Company in the amount of $1,999,631.08 for this project. We'll be glad to answer any questions you might have.
Public comment, Lindsay? Questions for Paul? Oh, all right. Jenny, will you please call the roll?
Ms. Aludo?
Yes.
Mr. Keeler?
Yes.
Vice Mayor DeRosa?
Yes.
Mayor Fox?
Yes.
Ms. Cram?
Yes.
Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Ms. Amrose Grooms?
Yes.
Resolution 49-22.
Intent to appropriate an easement from Carla Grace Baldwin, Amy Jo Hall, Danny Lynn Johnson, and the heirs of Roy Carl Johnson, deceased from the property located at 105 Franklin Street for the public purpose of carrying out the South High Street Utility Burial Project, 1903O CIP.
I'll introduce it. All right, Paul, you're earning your wages tonight.
During the acquisition phase of the project, the owner of parcel 2 passed away in their estate, was set, was basically passed on to four heirs with a quarter interest in the property itself. However, one of the heirs is now deceased after that passing of the mother, and their estate must go through probate process, which will take some time. The three living owners are agreeable to the city's fair market value for the acquisition and are in the process of executing a right of entry to perform the work on the parcel, while the deceased owner's one-quarter interest goes through the probate process. The right of entry grants the city permission to move forward with the project on the proposed easement area and agrees to the process for the easement once the ownership is determined for the deceased sibling. To keep the project on schedule, this resolution begins the appropriation process to await the finalization of probate for the deceased quarter-interest owner. Staff recommends approval of this resolution to allow the project to remain on schedule and proceed to construction. I'll be glad to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you. Do we have any public comment? No. Any questions from anyone here? All right. Jenny, will you please call the roll?
Ms. Cram?
Yes.
Ms. Aludo?
Yes.
Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Mayor Fox?
Yes.
Vice Mayor DeRosa?
Yes.
Ms. Amrose Grooms?
Yes.
Mr. Keeler?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Paul. Resolution 50-22.
Appointing a council member as the council liaison to the Architectural Review Board.
I'll introduce it. All right, our staff report is from Vice Mayor DeRosa.
Thank you. As you recall, at the August 29th, 2022 work session, City Council discussed the recommendations of the Administrative Committee regarding council liaison roles and a potential change to our council rules of order to reflect that role. On September 26th, Council adopted Resolution 4522 amending the council rules of order to address liaisons to our internal boards and commissions that council appoints. Council again then discussed boards and commissions to which liaisons might be appointed at our August 29th work session. And at that meeting, we determined that it would be prudent to appoint a liaison to the ARB. Therefore, I am pleased this evening to bring forward this resolution, appointing Council Member Amy Cram as the council liaison to ARB. Moving forward, this appointment will be made during council organizational meetings in even years. Thank you.
And will you accept that appointment? All right. All right, is there any comment from the public? No? Any questions or discussion here on the dais? All right, well then, Jenny, will you please call the roll?
Mayor Fox?
Yes.
Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Ms. Cram?
Yes.
Ms. Aludo?
Yes.
Vice Mayor DeRosa?
Yes.
Mr. Keeler?
Yes.
Ms. Amrose Grooms?
All right, other business this evening. Operating budget revenue projections. Matt Stifler is going to tell us all about that.
Good evening, thank you, members of council. So tonight, we begin the 2023 operating budget process with the revenue estimates for that So just the quick agenda for tonight, we'll do a quick update on the 2022 operating budget and 2022 income taxes so that we know where we're at, and then we'll begin a conversation on the 2023 budget schedule and the operating funds and funds overview for that budget. Regarding 2022 operating funds, I'm pleased to say that the operating budget is well in advance, revenues ahead of expenditures, which is how we would expect it to be and how we hope it to be in October. At this point, on a budget of $93.3 million, we're already at $83.7 million. Revenues in all categories are at or ahead of schedule, particularly recreation revenues. You can see that we budgeted about $2.5 million and we're already at $2.6 million. Hotel motel tax revenues, we budgeted $3.8 million and we're already at $3.8 million. So we've achieved what we budgeted for on an annual basis in three quarters of the year, which is a testament to the recovery of those funds. For context, those numbers are unfortunately still down pretty significantly from 2019, but it's nice to see a significant recovery in 2022, and we're projecting continued recovery based on those year-to-date actuals in 2023, as we'll discuss in a little bit. Regarding the general fund, it is ahead too. Most of that is due to income tax, and we'll discuss that specifically in a few slides. Regarding expenditures, we had an original budget of $101.8 million. We have currently spent $77.5 with about $12.3 million encumbered. That's pretty much right on schedule. At the end of the year, we generally have between $5 and $7 million of encumbrances. So that is on schedule for how we've seen prior budgets. Putting those numbers together, we had an original budget variance of negative $8.5 million. Our current variance as of earlier this week, when I ran these slides, was about $6.2 million to the positive. We don't have a lot of non-recurring revenues or expenditures in our operating budgets, but I do try to call them out when we do have them. Of those $83.7 million, about $8.3 million of that is non-recurring revenue. Some of that was an advanced repayment of some debt that we did a few years ago, which you're all aware of. And of course, the $2.6 million in ARPA funds will not be returning to our budget, much to my dismay. So we've, we're done with federal grants probably for a while. On non-recurring expenditures from operating funds, we did have the land acquisition associated with ordinance 18-22, and non-recurring revenues and expenditures are well balanced, so there's no concern on that front either. Regarding 2022 income taxes, as of September 30th, at the end of the month, we were ahead 3.6% in front of, ahead of the number in 2021. Our budgeted income tax number for this year was $94 million. I think we're going to exceed that pretty significantly. At this point, we are projecting a budget of probably $102.1 million at the end of this year in income tax. We're going to spend a little bit more time kind of dissecting that number because that's really good news and I'm really happy about that number, but the way we got there is a story worth knowing or the way we're going to get there. You can see on a month-to-month basis here as we break down, that blue bar in April is significant and gets us significantly ahead for the year. You can see where we were at in April of last year compared to April of this year. And then you can start to see each month, those ending lines in red, green, darker green, brown and gray get a little closer together, and that's not what we want to see. We'd like to see them continue expanding throughout the year. Unfortunately, we're not seeing that, and that's some of the story we're going to have to talk about. Excuse me. So our most important component of income tax is withholdings, and I want to take a little bit of time to explain this graph. We talked about it a little bit during the Capital Improvements Program revenue presentation. We have two more months' worth of data. So we can see there, August and September did not continue the upward trend that we were on from May through June and unfortunately went in the other direction. September's number is significant, but it's also somewhat a result of timing. September last year was a three paycheck month. This year, it's a two paycheck month. It's not enough to make it a positive number, but it's not quite as bad as it looks. So I just want to caution that sometimes when you look at this information on a monthly, some of the noise can create a false narrative. So the negative 18% is a bit of a false narrative, even though it's a factually accurate statement to say that our withholdings were down that much last month. The story here is that withholdings were way ahead the first four months of the year and have struggled since May. Indeed, the only month that they've been at or near zero was July. So on a year-over-year basis, we started the first four months of the year very much ahead, and we have been struggling to keep that pace the remainder of the year. That's true of withholdings and that's true of our income taxes overall because withholdings are such a large component of our income tax revenue. Net profits is a similar story. Again, we start out very fast the first four months and then have cooled down since then. We're still up significantly. That's the important takeaway from net profits is that for the year, we are up 24.5% on net profits. A lot of that has to do with really a red-hot economy. The first four months of this year, we had very little talk of economic downturns or things of that nature, and inflation is really helping net profits. They're able to capture additional profits. So to the extent that that's involved there, we're seeing some benefit to net profits through inflation in this graph. But again, we're seeing the first four months of the year tell one story, the last five months tell a little bit of a different story. There's not really much of a story to tell here in individuals. There's a filing deadline change that causes the April to May. So those months really would look pretty similar if the filing deadlines were equivalent, but we had a filing deadline in May last year and April this year, which is why you see the big jump. Lately, individual withholdings have tended to trend up, and indeed, individual withholdings are up 18.1% over a year. So we're seeing a story of net profits and individual withholdings, fairly consistent growth, income tax started ahead. Our employers changed their withholding in May, and we've been kind of struggling to get back to that 0% level since then. If you take all these together, you get a picture that looks very similar to withholdings, which is not a surprise given their domination of these revenues. But you can see, we started out 22.9% ahead overall. That would lead to an income tax estimate of $123, $125 million, and that's not where we're at, we're at $102.1 million, as you'll see on this slide. If you take the current year and project that forward for 2021 versus 2022, withholdings are down 9.5% May to September. Net profits are down 3.8% May to September. Individual withholdings are down almost 40%, but again, that's a reflection of timing. So to correct that for individual, I did April to September because that corrects the filing date problem. If you take that away, individual withholdings are actually up 20%. Projecting those values for the remainder of the year leads you to that income tax projection of $102.1 million. So on one hand, I'm very excited that our income taxes continue to exceed budget expectations and are on pace, at least at this point, to potentially break a record we set last year. The trouble is that that blue line is not above 0% for the second half of the year, and we're not going to have the same four months to start the year next year that we had this year. That was a one-time event of Columbus employers changing their withholdings to account for remote work where our employers still had not. So that is not going to be repeated, even though, you know, income taxes are paid monthly. That phenomenon is not going to help us in the future. We are a benefactor of the timing of change, which we couldn't know when we made these estimates. It could have gone the other way. I'm glad it didn't. And we'll see how these projections impact our 2023 income tax estimate, but I want to pause here and answer any questions you have on 2022.
Any questions? Kathy?
So Matt, when you guys were digging into why we're seeing these reductions, are there two or three big takeaways of what's causing this to help us understand how that might shake out going forward?
Sorry, the big takeaway is remote work. We had some of our larger employers move to the two days out, three days in hybrid work environment, and that's really, our top 10 are not the same top 10 that they were pre-remote work, and they're not as strong as they were pre-remote work, and that's something that we would expect to continue. It's the middle, I'm not sure what the right number is, it's the middle layer of companies that are helping to drive our growth at this point, which is actually kind of encouraging, but that remote work policy of some of our major employers is problematic from a revenue generation standpoint. One of the things that I think is surprising or surprises me, a couple of years ago, when we had major employers announce that they were leaving our community, that's a tough, that's a tough situation to absorb, but companies that leave your community take two, three, four, five years to get out of the office. It's a very slow, at least in our case, it was a very slow rollout. Remote work was overnight, right? They moved and then they changed the payroll, and then they walked out the door on Friday, and they didn't come back in the door on Monday, and it was immediate. And our income taxes reflect that in May. It was instantaneous that the remote work impact hit our finance office, as we expected. We just didn't know the magnitude, and that's where we're at today.
Matt, can you back up to that withholding slide? I think it was three or four in, I'm sorry, the, oh, no, you were right, you were right. So you said previously, September was a three payroll month and this year it wasn't. What were the three payroll months?
That I don't know off the top of my head.
Well, just, what I'm trying to do, what I'm trying to understand is like this July number that's very close, is that artificially inflated because that, the three pay month happened in July rather than in September?
We don't have that information offhand. We can certainly provide it to you.
It just, it would just be helpful to know, you know, if that was a three payroll month in September and it was still down last year, you know, we're still down, but there should be a bump equivalent somewhere in here. I just don't know which, where it is.
Yeah, that's accurate. There should be two or three paycheck months a year depending upon the year, and we could, we will let you know.
Because if it was April, that might level that bar out a little bit, but then if it was also July and we were thinking we were close in July where we really weren't, it's artificial because that was the three payroll month.
It's also a little difficult on a monthly basis. Annual bonuses aren't always paid out at the same month. Sometimes you'll have a payroll rollover from a prior month to a new month one year and roll back. Like, there's a lot of noise that can occur, but this is the best kind of data we have to kind of look at it.
Thank you.
I had one more as related question. So I see you're projecting on the same slide, down, 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 but I, you know, jumping forward to next year, you're anticipating we're going to see a flattening, right? So is, does the data suggest that the big moves have been made and now we're seeing it, or are we still waiting for some big moves?
I think the data would suggest that we saw the big moves in May and we're still seeing them, but I don't know that I can say with confidence that we've seen all of the big moves that could occur. I think that's part of the difficulty is we don't know necessarily what every employer is intending to do or what they might change, right? Because those employees that were working hybrid could be called back into the office as quickly as they were told to stay home, and that change in policy changes this overnight just as fast. So I would say I'm, I would say we've seen some of the impact. How much, I don't know, and that, I think in terms of scale, there was a paper, OMA published a paper that kind of analyzed our data, and they were projecting that if every remote eligible worker in Dublin worked remotely, we would see an 18% decrease in income taxes. So we have not seen an 18% decrease. So we have not seen an 18% decrease, but we know that all of our remote eligibles are not. So we know that in Dublin, the major employer have elected basically a 40% remote policy. So 40% of 18 puts us closer to 10. We've seen seven, which I think is probably validates 18% as a worst-case scenario. We've seen a 7% to 10% movement since May in terms of withholding. So I guess to answer it, I feel like most of the major moves occurred, but I would not be shocked if we saw another major move because we just don't know what's out there.
And just out of curiosity, you mentioned bonus payout. Is that something that you are aware of, like when that happens for our major employees? Because I'm curious then, like, you know, have they not been paying bonuses? And do we expect?
They have historically paid them annually at the same time, but sometimes there's a little noise or delay, or there can be from year to year. I don't have any information that there's anything in particular that have caused anything of note on this graph, but just...
I just didn't know with the economy that maybe they just weren't paying it.
No, I think they've been smaller. I think our indications are that 2021 was a much better year than 2022 in terms of those bonus payments. And we would project 2022 to probably be better than 23, given what we all know the world is looking like.
Matt, I wanted to ask you, this remote work reporting, as unpredictable it is for ourselves, it must be fairly unpredictable for these businesses. How accurate, and also, is there any way to track the accuracy that the major companies have in reporting who's working remote and who isn't? I mean, we're just depending on a company to tell us if someone's working remote or not. Is there any way to track, at least in the major companies that we depend on, their accuracy of reporting?
Good evening, members of council. And to answer that question, I think you're going to have, certain employers have already corrected. Now, some are not tracking it, say, every day, and every person working from home this day or that day. So they're coming up with a hybrid model. So for example, the most common one is two days out and three days in. So for what we're seeing is a 40% reduction in our semi-monthly payments we're receiving from that employer. Now, I think the biggest difference or reduction we're seeing so far is you'll see a company that actually has a three paycheck month. And historically, we can kind of see when certain employers pay these three paycheck months. But that same employer now, very large employer, is now 40% reduction on the semi-monthly pays. That's a big hit to our revenues, and that's where we're seeing our biggest drop.
All right. Any other questions here? Okay, well, we appreciate you filling us in on this.
Absolutely. So the other, the other component I would mention on that is, I think I mentioned it on our 23 slide, but I'll mention it here for context. Our tax office has billed over $30 million in remote work wages to people that have claimed that they were working outside. So that's a $600,000 amount of invoices that have been sent out that we're awaiting payment on. The, the timing of that will obviously change potentially significantly, you know, whether that is received in '22 or '23, or whether we have to continue to bill, or whether they correct their withholdings. So I think this is just a very fluid situation at this point, and we're doing the best we can to make sure that we navigate it as, as well as possible. But there's a lot of newness to this market that it was really not designed for. I mean, you're supposed to withhold to your principal place of business, and that's supposed to be where you go to work. So it's, it's just a new environment, and I think we're working through it. All right, so moving on to the 2023 operating budget. So as far as schedule goes, we're going to have, obviously, the revenue presentation tonight. We will have a work session next Monday. The first hearing will be on October 24th. We will have another work session on Tuesday, November 1st. And then the second hearing on the operating budget will be November 14th. So we will not have a hearing on the November 7th council meeting regarding the operating budget. With regard to operating revenues and operating funds, our operating funds are listed on this slide. We do have some changes from prior years. Of course, you would expect that the, the two funds related to federal funding are no longer being funded, so they're no longer relevant moving forward. That's the coronavirus relief fund and the local fiscal recovery fund. We have no expenditures and no revenues budgeted in those funds. I would expect them to be inactive moving forward. Regarding the wireless 911 fund, that fund had previously been in the operating budget because it contained a transfer to the safety fund. With the proposed 2023 CIP, we're proposing to make that fund a capital-focused fund so that we can use those revenues to, to provide a funding source for the relatively expensive and relatively infrequent capital improvements that the NREC dispatching center needs. So we will no longer do the operating transfer. We'll pool those 911 fees into that fund and then utilize it to provide for capital funding source for those projects so that we can save the CIP funds for roadway and other projects and use those funds that are identified for the wireless 911 for that NREC center. So that fund will no longer be an operating fund for the foreseeable future. We'll see what the fund balance does over time. If it grows, it could become an operating fund again. But I think the revenues and expenditures for that fund are well-matched with regard to the 23 CIP. So operating revenues are $94.1 million. This is a decrease of 0.1% as compared to the 2022 operating budget. The main reason for this decrease is the removal of intergovernmental revenues associated with ARPA funding. So last year, we had $2.6 million in ARPA funding. That is no longer part of our operating revenues. So we, we started in a $2.6 million decline from last year and worked our way up to basically a flat revenue situation. Excuse me. Regarding our revenue, we are projecting income taxes to be flat next year. So we'll have a discussion, a little bit more conversation on that. Hotel motel, as we saw earlier, our budget numbers for this year in 2022 have already been met. So we're budgeting more realistically for '23, knowing kind of where we are in '22. So that 40% increase is on a budgetary basis, but it's only about a 10% increase in actuals, which is consistent with Visit Dublin, Ohio's expectations for next year. Property taxes went up slightly. Of course, the fiscal recovery fund dollars are no longer available. Again, in recreation, we're seeing an increase of 29.7%, which is significant on a budgetary basis. But we're already at that $2.6 million number in revenue this year. So we're projecting continued recovery, but not necessarily the 30% that you see on a budgetary basis. It's a much smaller number than that. And in terms of special event revenue, which is the hotel motel tax, we are going to continue to increase special event revenues commensurate with increases, frankly, in special event pricing. So we'll continue to keep the costs and revenues for those events at a historically consistent level. Other financing sources is a payment of advances that varies every year by TIF fund availability and which TIFs owe the general fund. So next year, those will be increasing as part of that process. With regard to budgeted and actual revenue, you can see here this graph, which displays them both back to 2006. You can see that in 2022 to 2023, we're projecting a relatively flat revenue. But we also believe that it's, it's hopefully somewhat conservative in nature and that we can eclipse that by the end of 2023. Regarding 2023 income taxes, so we are projecting flat income taxes. So $94 million in 2022, $94 million in 2023. That estimate is based on these following numerics, and that is removing some of the known non-recurring revenues in 2022. So we know some things that were one-time payments, pull those out. We know EDA agreements specify new entrants and new growth, and we add those in to come up with a new base number. We expect a 13% decline in withholdings from January through April in '23 as compared to 2022, because we're starting with that extreme number. Those first four months are going to be compared, frankly, against the best four months in the city's history revenue-wise. So we're going to see some challenges in the first quarter. We're also projecting a 4% decline in May through December as compared to 2022. Net profits, we're 20, we're over 20% over last 21 numbers compared to 2022 numbers in net profits. Net profits are really a function of general economic health. It would be very aggressive to expect that net profits in the general economy next year perform as well in '23 as they do in 2022, given the kind of information we're receiving from the Fed and, and other sources. So we're projecting a slight decline in net profits. Individual, we're projecting no change because we continue to expect remote work to, to continue to grow, and those would be reflected there. If you put those numbers together on a monthly basis, this chart's a little busy, but you can see that in 2022, when you do a monthly analysis, we end up with that $102.1 million number. When we apply those previous metrics to withholding, we end up at just over $70 million for net profits. We end up at just over $16 million, and individual is just over $9 million, leading us to a 2023 total of $95.6 million. So that's why we left the budget flat at 94. It's a slightly conservative, but frankly, I wish, I wish I could say I felt it was as conservative as it was historically. I think it's probably not as conservative as we have been historically, but I still think that it's an appropriate number. The important part of this graph, too, is based on our expectations. That year-to-date column is, is the reversal of our 2022. So in 2022, we got out to a big lead, and we kind of slid into, if you can slide into a record income tax, we, we managed to do it. But next year, we're going to start out, we're projecting to be down 10% on a year-to-date basis through April. That's, that's a, that's a scary number. And then we're projecting that we're going to climb our way out of that to something more manageable. But I kind of want to call that out because I don't want anybody to be surprised in April if we see some, some frankly, negative income tax numbers that we haven't seen before. That's not unexpected, given where we are and what we expect '23 to look like as compared to '22. All of that together, though, supports a flat budget estimate of $94 million for next year very well. And I'll pause here if there are any questions on income tax, because that's a lot to take in, and that's a very busy table.
You had, on one of your initial slides, you had different revenue streams, one of them being property tax. Do we have any idea when the property tax reevaluation might happen and what impact that might have on that number? You know, we saw record-high transfers, dollar amount transfers, and I would, I would imagine that they're going to try to capture those sooner rather than later?
That's a, that's a great point, and we would. I don't know when the Sessennial update is, but we certainly have that information. And you're right, it's the every three years on the triennial updates that those numbers actually move significantly.
Because that, that could be, not that property tax is ever going to really move the needle, but it might help close a gap here or there.
No, I appreciate that. I love every positive number.
So Matt, what I find helpful is we're comparing budget numbers to budget numbers, not actual numbers to projection, projected next year numbers. So like, if in this first column, if you take the $102 million and, and begin to, to remove some of the one-time things and some of those other estimates, I think it's helpful to, to, to track, it, it's, it's very interesting to track and useful to track budget to budget, but sort of actual to, to, to budget. Do you know what I mean? Because there were, there are one-time hits there, and it's not just in the income tax, of course, but the overall, overall revenues, the ARPA funds, et cetera. So if we made an apples-to-apples, same-store-sales comparison and took out some of those, those one-time hits, I think that's a useful number for us to look at when we're talking about projection, because you're talking about sort of being flat and reverting to the numbers we had one time before, removing the anomalies, right? If you were to draw a straight line through that. I, maybe I'm not being very articulate here, but I think that would be helpful for us to see or to feel confidence in the, you know, what happens to the $95 million or the $94 million. Is that making any sense at all?
It does. I would say here, like, the, the January through September numbers are actuals, and then the projection, obviously, for April through December '22 and the projection for all of '23. So these, these are actuals and projections. If you go back, we do, of course, have a budget number for $94 million budgeted monthly that we could...
I'm more talking about moving it forward, not so much projecting what we're going to have for the rest of this year. But if your analysis about, we think we've caught the, the, the biggest wave of the change, and we have somewhat settled, okay? There may be some ebbs and flows, but we've somewhat settled in the withholdings area particularly. Don't know what's going to happen to, to business profits. But to really help us look at that over a period of a time, because those large swings cause, cause the angst that you're seeing in that last column, if that makes any sense.
Sure.
A normalization, if you will, of that, because I think that will help us feel confident about, okay, is it 95 million, 97 million, 94 million, you know?
Yeah. I don't think we're going to have that level of data for another year, year and a half. We have five months of data, and I mean, I spoke to you two months ago. We had three months of data. I think the number, the number that I had previously was a 0.3% growth. I think it was $100.7 million. Now it's 1%. So we've seen some, there's some movement, there's some consistency. It's just hard with, there's so much noise to use a monthly data point is really, really the way we have to approach it. And with only five data points from May, we'll get three more by the end of the year. But I'm really looking to see what January, February, and March look like, because we don't have any data points on the new withholding structure in those years. So those years are complete, completely open. I think it's, I think we're just going to have to take some time, because I have the same concerns you do, and I'm twisting it and trying to find an answer, and I don't think I can satisfy myself. So I don't think I could satisfy you either.
Thank you. I appreciate it. But you know what I'm asking anyways, to help us remove as much noise as we can to really see what sort of trend lines. And although you may feel like you've got some of the big bumps, maybe, maybe not yet. Thanks. I appreciate that.
So you said that these numbers aren't as conservative as maybe you had historically used, but I think Kathy and Krista's comment, maybe they are, because the 2022 actual includes ARPA funds, right?
Not for the income tax estimate, but for the budget number it would.
For the budget number. So if you take that out, and then you add in the little teeny bit of property tax increases, or maybe, or these numbers are more conservative than what we hope reality will be?
That's true. I do expect, I do hope that we eclipse these budget numbers, but I do not have the same level of confidence that I might historically have had. I mean, historically, if you look at our income, our operating revenue estimates, we've missed it two times in the last 20 years, 2021 and '09. It takes a pandemic or a great recession to throw us off our economic, our operating revenues. But that's still only a 90% chance that will eclipse it. That's not 100%. I mean, so in some way, that's too conservative, and in another way, 90% is, I mean, I'm not sure what I'm willing to bet on a 90% chance, but probably not something of too much value, like a city's fiscal health. So I think there's some, something to be said for being that conservative. I don't know that we're there this year at that level. I don't know that I have a 90% chance thought that we're going to eclipse this number, but I think it's better than 50/50. I couldn't say where. I feel like we're still more conservative than we are, just not, not as conservative. And I think we are potentially facing some economic downturn that this, this program's in. I don't want to pre-program a recession, though, right? If something happens, we'll deal with it. There's a big difference between something happening in February and something happening in November, and no one can tell us when something is going to happen. So to, to, to address it as though it has already happened, I think is probably far too conservative. But to ignore that it can exist at all is probably also a little foolhardy. So trying to, trying to be realistic about a path forward.
Any other comments? Matt, I would just say, obviously, anyone looking at all of these numbers would become, it would be very confused if you, unless you sat down and really studied it. And obviously, we would spend time to do that. But one of the things I appreciate is that you're giving us an opportunity to understand the trends, that, that there, there is this flow that's happened during the course of the year, and we can understand it based on what's happened to the economy. It's also very helpful as we go forward in thinking, as you just mentioned, the first quarter is one of those ones where it could, it could have some real potholes in it. I mean, we could have a really rough first quarter, and it's, it's good to know. have a really rough first quarter. And it's good to know and anticipate, I think, that we understand that, you know, we have some areas that look like, they might be little red flags for us, so that, you know, we're not surprised. I think that's what I appreciate the most, because we can go forward with some trepidation that we don't always understand it, but at least we're prepared for whatever comes along. So I really appreciate the way you explain this to us. Any other comments here? Okay, well, thank you so much. Are we, do you have?
I've got a few more revenue sources, luckily. It's not just all income tax.
You keep going.
So this kind of, we've kind of already talked about this, the degrees of uncertainty in remote work. So I'll just state that those are some of the factors that could lead to this analysis being significantly different than reality, because we aren't able to predict inflation at this point. Workforce availability, gives and take, it has the ability to affect both sides of our ledger, and obviously, an economic slowdown is something that we need to be mindful of. And then also, as I mentioned, the Division of Taxation billing $30 million in payroll for remote work wages, we don't know how much more might be out there or when those individuals might begin paying more regularly. So there's still a lot of uncertainty and things to work out in the remote work tax environment. Regarding other revenues, so recreation and pool funds, we are budgeting $3.8 million next year. You can see that that's still below the $4.3 million that the recreation and pool funds cumulatively earned in 2019. So again, well, that's a significant jump from the 2022 original budget of $3 million. You can see 2022 actuals are already almost at $3.2 million. And you can see there that that purple line is getting closer to those green lines that are the pre-pandemic numbers. So the green lines are pre-pandemic, the orange lines, yellow lines are kind of 2020, 2021 pandemic impacted numbers, and then the purple line is the current year. So as we approach those green bars on these next few graphs, we start to approach normality. And I'm hopeful that, you know, the June, July, August, September purple lines start to mirror those green lines pretty well. So hopefully, we can get back to a more pre-pandemic level of recreation and pool revenues. Regarding hotel motel funds, once again, we're budgeting, these are just the funds that go into 232. These are not including the 35% that goes to Visit Dublin, Ohio. So that $2 million number is only 65% of what we project hotel motel taxes to be, because those are the component that are part of the operating budget. And once again, you could see that's a fairly substantial jump from the 2022 original budget. But when you look at our year-to-date revenues, it's very reasonable. And you can see once again that that purple bar continues to gain on the pre-pandemic numbers, indicating that we're continuing to recover in this area. With regarding other event revenue, you can see that we held a very successful finance, from a finance perspective and from other perspectives as well, Irish Festival this year, because you can see that the August revenue for the festival was near those pre-pandemic bars. So we hope to continue to see growth in our special events revenue. Putting all of this together, you end up with basically a flat budget across all of those funds with those changes that we've previously discussed. So that is my last slide, and I'm happy to take any questions.
Any further questions for Matt? That's a lot. That's a lot to take in, Matt. We appreciate it, really do.
Absolutely.
All right. Thank you very much. Next, our staff comments. Welcome, new city manager, Megan O'Callaghan.
Good evening. Thank you. I do have several updates. For the 12th year in a row, the readers of Columbus CEO Magazine voted the city of Dublin as top choice for Best Suburb for Business honors. We have over 4,300 businesses that call Dublin home, and we're honored to receive this recognition of success. I'd like to congratulate the economic development team for two recent awards from the International Economic Development Council honoring exemplary economic development, marketing campaigns, projects, and programs. They also received gold honors for real estate redevelopment and reuse, and silver honors for innovative project financing. Our final document destruction event of the year was held this past weekend at the Fleet Building. Staff helped 342 cars safely destroy everything from paper documents to CDs to hard drives. This event's part of our ongoing sustainability efforts, and we appreciate the community's efforts to divert waste from the landfill. The Deer Run Force Main project is installing a 16-inch sanitary sewer force main on Dublin Road. Southbound Dublin Road is currently closed to traffic between Glenair Drive and Ashford. These closures are expected to continue until November 23, just in time for the holidays. The contractor's making every effort to open the road prior to that date. There aren't any traffic impacts expected after November on Dublin Road, but there will still be outstanding work associated with procuring and installing the lift station, and that'll occur over the next year or so. But that work isn't anticipated to impact traffic. So that's an update on that project. The Popular Spooktacular event is this Thursday, October 13, from 4 to 8, and Friday, October 14, from 1 to 5. That's a day off school for Dublin students. The event will be held again at the south end of Kaufman Park. There will be a variety of activities, food trucks, entertainment, and the popular trunk-or-treat. So we'd like to remind city and school district residents that timed tickets for trunk-or-treat are available online, and we have more details about the event on the city's website. October is Cyber Security Awareness Month, so anyone who has access to the city's networks and devices are required to complete cybersecurity awareness training. So that's all of us in this room. There is a constant threat of malware, ransomware, and phishing attacks, so raising awareness of cybersecurity is very important. And then the last item that I have is on Wednesday, November 2. We will host the second Evening of Gratitude from 6 to 8 at the Exchange at Bridge Park. And that event is to thank all of our volunteers that assist us throughout the year. This event was first held in 2019, and it was delayed for the past two years due to COVID. The event gathers key leadership volunteers, particularly our CSOs, bike ambassadors, park ambassadors, heritage interpreters, Dublin Irish Festival leaders, and many other programs. There will be live music, interactive entertainment, hors d'oeuvres, and brief speeches to thank all of our volunteers, and it's a wonderful opportunity to recognize and thank them. So please remember to RSVP for that event, and an agenda will be sent out prior to that event. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The council reports. This evening, I think we only have one council report. Administrative Committee?
Yes, I'll get that right. I appreciate that. The Administrative Committee met on October the 4, and we had two topics. The first is, we had an update on staff's recommendation for what would be our second round of board and commission and council DEI education. As you recall, we decided amongst ourselves and approved training every other year for our board and commission members and ourselves. And so we're working with staff to put together that recommendation. We received some suggestions at our joint board and commission council meeting, and so they're working to incorporate those. So they'll bring them back to the committee, and then we'll bring that forth to council for recommendation and implementation and rollout into early 2023. Then the second item on the agenda, we had a staff update on IT. City manager, O'Callaghan, mentioned cybersecurity. Staff gave us a very nice update on all of the projects. We also talked about privacy and policies related to that and data privacy policies in the environment that they're in. So they're going to do a bit more work and bring some of that back to the committee. And I anticipate we will bring to council some considerations regarding our data and other privacy policies and recommendations later. But the team is doing a great job, lots of projects, lots of activities, and we very much appreciate all of their work. So more to come. Thank you.
Thank you. Roundtable? Christina, would you like to start?
I don't have anything specific, other than welcome to your first meeting, Megan, and many more to come. Looking forward to it.
Chris?
I just wanted to mention, we had our MORPC executive committee meeting last Thursday, and there were some revised 2023 population estimates, and I think they're going to be very interesting. So I know Jenny distributes those meeting minutes out following the subsequent meeting. So the commission meeting will be this coming week, so you'll see those. And I would encourage you to take a peek at the population estimates. It's a telling story. And, you know, as we continue to learn all of the things post-COVID, I think that will be a lesson that's worth paying attention to as well. I have one quick question for Megan relative to the Deer Run Force Main. I've been asked a number of times about the repaving of that road as they fill in that trench with asphalt. So it doesn't sound like the timeline will permit them to repave Dublin Road this year. So will that be a springtime event?
So Robert and his team are currently coordinating the timing of resurfacing with the Ohio Department of Transportation. So we'll know more about the schedule for that resurfacing in the coming weeks.
Okay. Thank you. I think it probably would be worth waiting to...
Yeah, yeah, at this point.
Just the disruption and the settling and all of those things that were going to happen. If we, you know, we'd only be able to get it done by the skin of our teeth, and I'm not sure the risk reward is there for that. It might be better off letting it sit for a year and then, or not a year, but a season.
We agree.
And do it in spring. But...
I agree.
And then I would also like to welcome you to your first council meeting, and hopefully they'll all conclude by nine.
Amy? I have nothing to add.
Welcome.
So first, I'd like to commend Rick Gerber for putting together a great Founder's Day event, Sunday, October 2. It was a beautiful day, a bit crisp, but great turnout and a nice little spark to the west side of the river. Also, the Performing Arts Center feasibility study is getting underway. All of us will be contacted here in the coming weeks. If you, this is a team effort. It's going to take a lot of connections, connecting to people, stakeholders in the community that you know would support the arts. So if you have names of folks that you think are passionate and interested in moving this forward, please let the consultants know, Robert know, myself know, one of us know, so that we can make sure that they're contacted. And again, welcome, Megan. If you have any doubt about the career path opportunities in the city of Dublin, just look at these tables. It's like musical chairs. You've moved here, and folks back there have moved forward. So some fresh new faces in the front line, moving on up. It's a great demonstration of career paths. Welcome, Megan, and thank you for taking on this responsibility.
And I will just say thank you and welcome, Megan. We're delighted you're here. Fabulous team every day, and we appreciate all you do. Just to listen to your staff update is just a testament to all the amazing things going on. So welcome. Thank you.
Thank you. It is one minute till nine, so I'm going to make this one minute. Just that, I wanted to mention that Megan and I attended a comma meeting, which is the Central Ohio Mayors and Managers Association meeting in Powell. Mayor Dan Swartwout welcomed us. Andy White is their city manager. He mentioned that a good number of their department directors are new to their positions. Almost the entire city is new, which offers them a unique opportunity to work together with some fresh perspectives, kind of unusual. Powell recently raised their income tax rate from a half percent to 2%. I thought you'd be interested in that. And their intention is to utilize that new revenue for public safety, economic development, operational efficiencies, and capital improvements. The featured speaker was Dr. Amy Acton. She's now the Executive Director of Rapid Five Initiative. She and her staff are really committed to helping support the vision of Rapid Five as a unique single greenway system, and to celebrate nature, connect and unite neighborhoods, and to expand access. She noted that their intention with their new employees is to help develop services to the communities in Columbus to help them apply and obtain GRAT funding, and she's hoping that she'll be able to make that easier for all of us. Dr. Robert Crane spoke on an upcoming proposed legislation on November 7 in the city of Columbus to end the sale of flavored nicotine and tobacco products. He stated that those are used in the vaping devices that many youth use, and that the marketing is geared towards youth. And he is requesting suburbs to take on legislation. I think it's something that, if you have the interest to study this, because I learned a lot by listening to the presentation and something that I wasn't really very well at. And then last, and I think Chris could help us with this later on, William Murdock from MORPC, mentioned that the group, MORPC has submitted to the region, to the Federal Railroad Administration for federal funding for the 3C and Ds. And that's an interesting, the Columbus-Daten-Cincinnati route, and we found that to be fascinating. So we'll look forward to hearing about what MORPC's got planned. So, other than that, that's all. And Megan, welcome. And this meeting is adjourned. 9:02. All right. Thank you, everyone. Good evening.